All right. Hello, everyone, and welcome to the February 7th, 2022 Select Board Meeting. In accordance with an act relative to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency and signed into law by Governor Baker, tonight's Select Board Meeting will be conducted remotely via Zoom and will not be open to the public for physical attendance. The meeting is being recorded, live streamed and cable broadcast by the Eastern Community Access Television, Comcast 98 and Verizon 23, and on ECAT's website at www.easterncat.org. This meeting is closed captioned for the hearing impaired. If you're watching on your computer, you'll see a CC button on the toolbar at the bottom of your screen. If you're watching at home and you have a question or a comment, you can email the board at selectboard@eastern.ma.us. And if you're watching from an electronic device, please pose your question on the Q and A feature of the Zoom portal. Remember to include your name and street address for the minutes. At this time, I'd like to ask each Select Board member to state their name to ensure we have a quorum.
Craig Barger.
Mark Lamb.
Amy Stebbins.
Jennifer Stacey.
And Dottie Fulgenetti. Welcome, everyone. The first item that we have on the agenda tonight, we've invited Senator Walter Timmelti to join us with Major Joseph Bloom to talk to us a little bit about a cybersecurity initiative. So we will bring them into the room. And we also have Representative Carol Doherty with us as well.
You're on mute, Walter.
Thank you very much. Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you.
Good evening. Good, oh, thank you very much. Sorry about the momentary technical difficulty there. Cheerful Genetti, Select Board Member Barger, Select Board Member Stacy, Select Board Member Stebbins, and of course, Select Board Member Lamb, and of course, Connor Reed, thank you very much. And Major Bloom, Cheerful Genetti, thank you for introducing Major Bloom, and Major Bloom, thank you for your service. Quite succinctly, and of course, Representative Carol Doherty, my colleague and friend here in the Eastern delegation. Thank you, Representative Doherty. I, first of all, to the people of Eastern and to this board, thank you very much for the privilege of working for you. One of the privileges that has been accorded to me in the Massachusetts State Senate is to serve as the Chair of Public Safety and Homeland Security. Within the purview of that committee, the Mass National Guard lies. And it's been a wonderful privilege to work with the men and women of the Mass National Guard led by our adjutant and General Keith. One of our Guardsmen, of course, as you see tonight, is Major Joe Bloom. And to you, Major, thank you again very much. The Massachusetts National Guard, I've witnessed them firsthand down in Washington DC protecting our nation's capital, protecting our Congress, protecting the Vice President's residence, and protecting the White House. And I did that in concert with General Keith back in April. I've also had the privilege of working with the National Guard on several other endeavors and witnessing firsthand the Yankee cybersecurity exercise, which is held at Cape Cod, Joint Base Cape Cod this past summer, in conjunction with National Guard forces from all around New England and some other National Guard forces from the rest of the 50 states, as well as federal law enforcement and state police agencies from around America. Quite simply, our National Guard is outstanding at many different missions, cybersecurity being one of them. As a nation and as a Commonwealth, we are vulnerable to rogue nations, criminal enterprises, and hackers who operate alone. Private entities, private businesses, municipalities are vulnerable as well. The National Guard is ready, willing, and able to support towns such as Eastern in forced protection in terms of cybersecurity. With that, I will be hosting on March 30th a forum at the Braintree National Guard where I am inviting each and every one of our towns in tonight, Eastern. And Cheerful Genetti, we've had numerous conversations about this, so thank you very much in order to lay the groundwork. But on March 30th, and the partnership will get it ramped up ahead of time, of course. But on March 30th, the National Guard and myself will be hosting this forum with General Keith to forge partnerships with the town of Eastern in terms of cybersecurity. And also educate and train whomever this Select Board would like to dispatch as emissaries to this forum in terms of training, education, and obviously forging a partnership. So with that, Cheerful Genetti, with your permission, I would like to introduce Major Bloom, who will give us an overview of the National Guard, what they will do with this partnership for the town of Eastern, and obviously what their capabilities are and what they envision going forward in terms of the services that they can provide to the town of Eastern in terms of cybersecurity. And thank you very much to the board and Madam Chair.
Yes, please do. We're very happy to have Major Bloom here tonight.
Major?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, thank you, members of the board for allowing me to speak tonight. So as, as the Senator said, one of the emerging or current ongoing threats and an increasing threat, not only in the Commonwealth but across the United States, is malicious actors looking to breach your networks. So on average, 60,000, these types of attacks cost about 60,000 to, well, close to $2 million in damage. And potentially for more. That's just a base estimate of the initial damage assessments. Recently, one or six communities in Massachusetts have actually been hit with a malicious attack, a cyber attack, typically in the form of ransomware. And those ransomware attacks have become the hackers' malware of choice or malicious software of choice. Forty-four percent of the most recent ransomware attacks have actually occurred on municipality and local town networks because they're the most vulnerable and they're the easiest to get access to. As well as the increase in attack services across these municipalities. So as you, as your town brings in new software, new equipment, if they're not configured correctly, it creates an attack service for, for those malicious actors to get a hold of. So the Massachusetts National Guard, my role, I'm actually the executive officer for the 126 Cyber Protection Battalion, currently located on Joint Base Cape Cod or Otis Air National Guard Base, if you're more familiar with Otis. So we've, what we've been working towards with state agencies, including EOPs, EOTS, the Mass State Police, the Fusion Center, as well as our federal partners, is establishing a municipal cyber support program where our soldiers provide their expertise, their skills, to conduct what we call a pre-incident assessment. If invited to your town, we would come in and we would take a look at your networks and come up with recommendations to remediate any vulnerabilities that we discover. We actually conducted this as a proof of concept recently in June of last year, actually during the cyber Yankee exercise that Senator Timmelti speaks about. We found a number of vulnerabilities that are potentially can be seen across all municipalities and towns, such as the control systems for your water, your water supply, being vulnerable to physical access, not being secure properly or being easily accessible through another building that has public access. One of the other things that we found is that a lot of networks, what we call flat, very two-dimensional, meaning that to access town hall, the town hall computers, all I need to do is sign into the library, to the library's internet. And I can access each and every one of your personal machines from just having that public Wi-Fi access in the library. So it's providing those, providing those skills, providing that pre-incident assessment is what we're looking to do as, as well as stand up a, another section of the State Defense Force, which is the state organized militia under Chapter 33 of Massachusetts General Law, and creating what we call a cyber state defense force underneath that organization. And that would be bringing in talent from civilians that may not want to join the military, but actually want to provide their skills and their expertise to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And that's being, we're currently in development for that and conducting the proof of concepts for that. And a brief overview of currently the, of what is in Massachusetts for cyber forces. For the Massachusetts Army National Guard, we actually have about 53 soldiers here in Massachusetts that are highly skilled. I have recently come back from a mobilization supporting United States Cyber Command and United States Army Cyber Command as well, protecting our networks here as well as conducting some offensive cyber operations against malicious actors out there. A lot of the things, a lot of the things that we have been working towards is establishing these partnerships to support this cyber support program, as well as establishing some of our academic partnerships as well as working with federal partners like DHS SISA, FBI Cyber, working with the Mass State Police and other organizations. As Senator Timmelti, again, going back to the Cyber Yankee Exercise, that's a large regional here in New England, a joint interagency exercise where we've invited the Coast Guard, the Marine Corps supports it as well from, out of, at a Second Marine Expeditionary Force in Camp Lejeune, as well as DHS SISA, FBI didn't have a representative this year, but they're expected to have one next year or this coming year, as well as several public and private sector industry partners, such as NWRA, EverSource, Belco, and industries like that, protecting those types of critical infrastructure networks and show, and the scenario being centered around protecting those types of networks. And those are the skills and services that we are looking to provide to your town as well as other municipalities in the Commonwealth. And I'll pause there for any questions.
Well, that's, that's great information. And, you know, I love the idea. We, in the Commonwealth, are always looking for ways to regionalize rather than reinvent the wheel for each community. So to be able to do this as a regional look over with your, you know, particularly with the towns in your territory or your districts, Walter, is really great. And I love the joint agency approach and regional, you know, businesses that are involved in this. So it sounds like a great plan. Before I ask for members of the board to comment, I just want to invite Representative Doherty, if you have any comments that you wanted to make.
So thank you very much, Cheerful Genetti, and to your board as well. And thanks, Senator Timmelti, for inviting me here. It was he that alerted me to this conversation. And I was anxious to hear what's going on. So I'm here to support the ask of Senator Timmelti of Eastern and to support the project. This is something that we hear more and more and more about. And I personally tend to be lax about my cybersecurity, just on my own equipment. And I think it's so critical. I just think someone's waiting in the wings to turn off our water, shut off our electricity, and cause havoc in our communities. So developing a partnership with such expertise coming to Eastern and to other places in the Commonwealth is really very positive. So thank you for inviting me, both Senator Timmelti and Cheerful Genetti. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Craig, comments, questions?
I just want to thank Walter for bringing this to our attention and thank Major for his service to Massachusetts. I don't have any questions. I look forward to the March 30th training.
Thank you, Craig.
Mark?
Same. Thank you, Senator Timmelti. Thank you, Major Bloom. Thank you for bringing this to our attention. You know, I think it's not a question of if, it's a question of when. So, you know, fortunately, we've been pretty good up until now, but it sounds to me like this is something that we've been very fortunate in our luck, so we don't want to push it much further. So thank you for, for providing us this information. Look forward to the 30th.
Thank you, Mark.
Jamie?
I think all of us, aside from our civic responsibilities, is dealing with, we're dealing with attacks daily in my corporate life. And so this is great. Timing couldn't be better. We keep getting new angles too, so it's not the same attacks. It's, it's new ones. It's ones that are, you know, we're trying to train our workforce as quickly as possible, but new techniques come out and you're going right back and doing remedial training with, trying to prevent intrusion. And as a former member of the National Guard, but on the air side, thank you, Major Bloom. It's a pleasure to have someone in uniform here at the meeting. And Senator Timmelti, thank you very much.
Thank you, Jamie.
And Jen?
This is awesome to hear that there's an opportunity like this to leverage these type of resources and learning. Like Jamie said and from previously, and this is such an area that we've, it's just scratching the surface of what's, what could be on the horizon in this space. I believe municipalities have a really interesting challenge because there's this balance between openness and security that makes it even more complicated. And then you throw in the explosion of edge devices, which I'm really glad you spoke a lot about edge devices and the effect they're having with security and being the door to these kinds of attacks. Because that's just growing and people don't realize the things that they have that are connected to the internet that then become this door and the security that's required. So really encouraged to hear about this. I'm really excited that we're going to be given this opportunity to explore this and hopefully take advantage of the recommendations. Thank you.
So we have great IT staff on the town side and on the school side. And they've, you know, especially through COVID, when we've had to deploy, you know, hundreds of Chromebooks to students and keep track of all of those assets and working remote and people having remote opportunities. They've really done an incredible job keeping our networks up and running and safe. And I think that, you know, traditionally municipalities are very short-staffed and we don't have a lot of resources. So to bring this opportunity to us, to help, you know, to help bolster up the, the good work that's already being done is really, it's great. And we're grateful that you thought of this and invited us into the program. So I'm really looking forward to March 30th as well. And I hope you have tremendous attendance from the other communities.
Well, Madam Chair, thank you very much. I believe that we will. And obviously, any member of the board who would like to come, please. And to the Chair and the Board and Connor, please, you send whomever that you would like from the town of Eastern's excellent governmental workforce, please send along. I believe this is going to be a wonderful partnership between the town of Eastern and the Mass National Guard. As we've talked about each and every one of us tonight, we are vulnerable. And there are various bad actors out there in this world, whether it be a rogue nation or a terrorist organization, sad to say, or simply a criminal enterprise who seeks to profit. And so discord. And I believe that Major Bloom, you've, in our conversations, you've told me in the past that in recent years, the Brockton Police Department was hit with a cyber check?
Yes, actually, this was recently in July 2021. A malicious actor took down their entire network and they had to go back to HF radio and pen a paper to respond to calls or even take calls through their dispatch. They were able to meet the need of the town of Brockton, but it did create some difficult, it did create a lot of difficulties for them. For, I believe they got their, it took them about a week to get their networks back up. And I, and I still think there's, they're recovering some machines. I'd have to verify that with this Fusion Center, but it was definitely a ransomware attack that locked up their networks. And to, to the comment about the IT staff and being understaffed and having difficulty managing all the networks at once. So that was, that, that was actually a key vulnerability that we found in the town that we were invited to for the proof of concept mission. That the, it was just one lone IT director on a network he was unfamiliar with and had no idea. Or it had, the documentation for that network had been updated in, I believe you said, 10 plus years. So it was, it'd been several years since that documentation had been updated. So to Ms. Stacy's point, edge devices, there was a lot of unknown devices on their network that weren't assigned to the town that we discovered that we had to kick off the network, as well as just doing a complete network discovery scan to figure out what he actually had on his network as far as machines and also software and operating systems. And we found that a lot of the operating systems were, a few of them were Windows XP. And Windows XP hasn't been supported in about five years. Microsoft actually stopped providing any service packs or any security upgrades to Windows XP machines about five, six years ago.
Well, we appreciate you being here tonight. And, you know, thank you, Senator Timmelti and Representative Doherty. And thank you for being here and thank you for your service, Major Bloom. I also want to give a shout out to Keisha, your district director, who's in one of the attendees. And she's, she's just an amazing, amazing part of the team. And we really appreciate you being here tonight, Keisha, as well.
Madam Chair, if I may for a moment, jump in and thank you very much for recognizing Keisha. Keisha is a wonderful person and a vital member of the team here at the State House. Keisha and I, right now, are actually at the State House in separate rooms on the air. And I, I would say by this point at night, Keisha's probably had enough of me. But we are privileged to be here tonight. And, you know, to Cheerful Genetti, Select Board Member Barger, Select Board Member Stacy, Select Board Member Lamb, and Select Board Member Stebbins, we're very excited about this. Major Bloom and I and General Keith from the National Guard, this will come at no cost to the town of Eastern. And I believe it will be a wonderful, long-lasting partnership that unfortunately, we have to combat cyber warfare and cyber attacks. It's not just the future, it's the present. And, you know, to Reptorety and Senator Brady, who are big supporters of this initiative, I thank you both. And March 30th, I believe, will be more than fruitful. And of course, we'll start laying the groundwork in the interim. So I thank you all very much. And Keisha, thank you very much.
Thank you for letting me be here to all the wonderful Select Board persons. So thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you. Good night, everybody. And congratulations to your wife, Connor. Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna take a second to swap out some people here. The next item on the agenda is Southeastern Motor Sales 70-50 anniversary. And we have a couple of people here for that. And I'm going to turn this over to Mark as Chair of the Economic Development Council. You can lead this discussion, Mark.
Thank you, Dottie. So I believe joining us tonight will be Derek Galtier. And I don't know if he's going to have anybody else with him. It could be Bert Lewis. It could be Eric Juvenello. But, so, so a couple of weeks ago, we were notified that this board and the Economic Development Board that Southeastern Motors is celebrating its 75 years, 75 years in business in Eastern, which is pretty remarkable. Not a lot of businesses are able to make it for 75 years. It's a family-owned operated business, multi-generational. I believe Derek has taken it over. Derek, are you with us? Can you hear me or take yourself off mute perhaps? I'd love, I'd love to be able to, for you to share a little bit about, about your business and these 75 years and how you got to where you are.
Yes, my, my father started the company in 1947. He was 21 years old with his, with his brother. Started his NSO gas station. And the other part of the property was, it was, it was restaurant bar. And that's how they started off back then. And back then, Route 138 was, it's still a state highway to this day. But that was the main, main route you took from Boston to Cape Cod. So there was no Route 24 then. And that, that was, that was the main road from, even all the way from New Hampshire. And, you know, it's, it lasted through the years, been very successful along the way. And it's, you know, the same location, nothing's really changed along the way. We're in the middle of putting up a new office as we speak. We kind of outgrown ours a long time ago, but we, we'll put up a new office in, you know, so 75 years, it's very exciting.
That's incredible. You know, so a huge congratulations on behalf of the Economic Development Council, the Select Board. Thank you for, you know, being a mainstay in Eastern for 75 years. I know your business. I know it well. It has a very good reputation. And I'm sure that it hasn't been all sunshine and rainbows. You know, there's, I'm sure there's been some difficult years and difficult times. And you guys managed to push through and, and stay part of the fabric of Eastern. So thank you for all that you do.
Mark, thank you.
You're welcome.
Craig, did you have any comments that you wanted to share?
I just wanted to thank Derek and his family for 75 years of business in the town of Eastern. We, we really enjoy having people invested in the town. And thank you, Derek, for, for being here tonight.
Craig, thank you.
Jamie?
Likewise, thank you very much, Derek. It's not every day that you get to celebrate the 75th anniversary of a company in existence in this town. So that's, that's fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you, Jane.
I'll just echo what was said before me, that that's really, thank you for being in Eastern and being a part of this community for so long. And, you know, 75 years is absolutely remarkable. So congratulations.
Thank you.
And we appreciate that you chose Eastern in the first place, but also that you continue to grow your business here, serve our community, presumably employ our, our neighbors. And it's a really big part of the economics stability and strength of Eastern. So thank you and your family for that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Derek.
Right. Have a good night.
Thank you, everyone. You too.
All right. Next, we have some one-day liquor licenses. The first one is the Shovel Town Brewery. This is for a Valentine's Day brunch. Frank Altieri has applied for a one-day beer and wine license for a Valentine's Day brunch. The event will be held at the Shovel Town Brewery, 50 Oliver Street, on Sunday, February 13th, from 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM. A detail officer is not required for this event. Can I get a motion in a second?
So moved, Barger.
Second, Lamb.
Roger, Lamb?
Roger, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Stebbins, yes.
AC, yes.
And Fulgenetti, yes. The next one is Powerhouse Cafe and Catering. It's a private wedding at the Queeset House. Laurel Morano has applied for a one-day beer and wine license for a private wedding to be held at the Queeset House, 51 Main Street, on Sunday, May 29th, from 3:00 PM to 10:00 PM. A detail officer is not required for this event.
It's a great, great site for a wedding and reception. And so I moved to approve the Powerhouse Cafe and Catering on May 29th.
Second, Lamb.
Roger, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Stebbins, yes.
ACS.
And Fulgenetti, yes. And then finally, we have Superior Servers. This is also for a private wedding at Oaks Ames Hall. Michelle McKenzie has applied for a one-day beer and wine license for a private wedding to be held at Oaks Ames Hall, 3 Barrows Street, on Saturday, October 22nd, from 4:00 PM to 9:30 PM. A detail officer is not required for this event.
Another great venue for, for a wedding. So move to approve Superior Servers, October 22nd, 2022 event.
Second, Lamb.
So it's Barger and Lamb?
Roger, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Stebbins, yes.
AC, yes.
And Fulgenetti, yes. Okay, next up, we have a discussion and vote on the Blanche A. Ames Elementary School Break Builders Corp. Project Change Order Number Five. And we are going to bring in Walter, I believe, Walter Hartley. Yep. Hi, Walter. Thanks for being here tonight.
Not a problem. How's everyone?
Good, Walter. Nice to see you.
You too.
Can you give us a little bit of a summary about what these change orders are? I know that in the packet, we have some detail. And if you could give us an overview.
Yeah, absolutely. So kind of standard that comes with every change order is an update on where we're at. So I'll go through this. So when we sent this over on the 28th, 41.6% of the contract time had elapsed. 16.2% of owner's contingency will have been expended following the execution of this change order. And 6% of owner's contingency is held in reserve at this time for known risk pending resolution. And just kind of briefly, for everyone in the audience who hasn't seen one of these go through before, before this change order is brought to the Select Board, it is reviewed by the Technical Review Committee, which was approved by the Select Board and the school, and the school planning committee to review PCOS, so, which make up the entire change order. They're vetted, following and voted upon following review by Perkins Eastman and PMA consultants before they even are offered to that group for their approval or dismissal. So once they reach the change order, they've been vetted three times. And it does take a while to get them there, but right now, we're in great shape. So certainly I can run through. It's a little bit of a longer one. I apologize. We are, we skipped a month. So we're kind of wrapping up end of November, December, and January into one. So we're kind of wrapping up end of November, December and January into one. So excuse me, the first PCO is PCO 32A. It is related to CCD 1, which was the, if you remember, the unforeseen tanks that were in septic system that was found over on the eastern side of the site. There was some Saturday work that was accompanying, allowing the steel deliveries to take place on the site. So this is premium time for scope that was authorized. So it's really just the difference between the regular rate and the overtime rate or the Saturday rate for the crew that was working on it. It's four guys, it's $583. PCO 32B, which was for the other portion of the work that actually was accomplished on that day. And also in regards to that was for creating the entryway, excuse me, that is across from the police and fire station. Right now it is kind of an, not an emergency entry, but in case anything were to happen, they can still use it. But it was used for steel deliveries. We had steel deliveries coming on a Monday and it was Friday and we did not have a way to get steel into the site without opening up that road. So this, this does stem back to July, but we finally did get an agreeable price. So $8,060 for building that entryway and working on that Saturday for that crew. The next PCO, PCO 42, excuse me, was the window changed to W4A to bring in a fire rated storefront. So on the drawings, we owned typical wood window at this location. This, this was incorrectly called out. So this is the material charge and a little bit of labor charge for fire rated storefronts at these locations. I believe it is for windows. But the upgrade cost is, is large, but is necessary to meet the code and the fire protection rating of the building. So $25,547 on that one. Excuse me. Next item is PCO 43. If you remember from the design phase, we have the front porches and front canopies at the first floor so that students can be outside, kind of an outdoor classroom, outdoor learning area, outside all the classrooms on the first floor. Under those canopies, we had a glue lamb ceiling. And in order to accommodate the sprinkler system that is needed in there, we did need to delete the glue lamb ceiling. So we added the fire sprinkler system there, which was not shown. And we deleted those ceilings and it actually netted a credit of $31,668. So we picked up a little bit of money there. And that included adding in the fire protection at all of those locations as well. There will be a little bit of time and materials work that goes along with this. Hasn't been accomplished yet, hasn't been taken care of yet as the trades aren't there yet. But there will be some additional work for one, two of the crews, the electrician and the framing company is going to need to create a chase for some electrical wiring. PCO 45 in relates, yeah, this relates to ASI 16 and RFI 151. This was hose bibs and wall hydrants. These are actually called out incorrectly on the drawing. And, excuse me. Sorry. And we, we did see that these were called out as hose bibs and should have been called out as wall hydrants. There was an upcharge for the material at these, I believe it's seven locations. Some on the building, some, and I believe one on the roof. But that was an upcharge of material and a little bit of labor for 87, $8,717. PCO 48 is a $0. This is PMA and great tracking a unit price drawdown on the contract. This just allows them to draw down. So when we took out, we did anticipate finding and did find some transisor pipes. So they've been drawing off that unit price allowance, which is already within the contract value. PCO 51, Building D Shop during comment. Some lintels were not shown on the drawings. They were needed in order to, for these locations to meet the structural code. So that was a $3167 change. Those are already included in the building. PCO 54, this was the nurses area millwork and ice maker. In order to meet the, there was anticipated for an ice maker to be carried within the refrigerator. But it has since been requested and kind of this, this one actually went to the School Planning Committee. It was a discretionary change following some FFNE meetings. And there was a concern that the ice maker in the refrigerator and freezer unit was not going to be sufficient. Perkins Eastman did agree that an ice maker would likely be needed for a school this size. So this accommodates the purchase of that, some millwork revisions in order to fit the ice maker, to fit the drain line, to get the drain line tied in, provide the water service to that location as well. It was $11,638 and that associated some millwork adjustments in the nurses office as well. PCO 55, added power and data not shown on the drawings for the automatic temperature control display at the main entry vestibule. That was $1,907, not paid for in the original contract, but needed in order for that display to work. Heading under the second page of the change authorization, like PCO 57 was for the relocation of three wall hydrants and adding three additional wall hydrants. Three of these are relocated to better service those front canopies, the front porch canopies. And three were added because they weren't shown on the drawings and there are six of these front canopies. And so it was, it is anticipated and really had this been, you know, had we had all time to design, we would have probably had all six of them. But these did add some additional piping. We were able to catch it. So it wasn't that large of a cost, but adding three further and making sure we get the runs and the drains all the way, the lines all the way out. It was 11,564. So it'll allow water to be used and hose it to be hooked up for students. Any type of water activity outside on those front porches and anything they're doing out there to have a water source. PCO 59 was for building ERTU shaft ceilings. The duct work during coordination needed to be relocated in a couple areas, rerouted in a couple areas, which included creating some shaft ceilings that were not shown on the drawings. So this was done by our drywall company and made sure that those get concealed within the ceiling. PCO 60 had to do with RFI 139. This is at Stair 4 cabinet unit heater and fire pipe, fire protection piping chase. Needed to make sure these get covered up and, and carried in the wall as opposed to exposed. That was $1,083. PCO 62 was for the flange sealant at the window. The specified window for the project, I think, if, if everyone doesn't know, was not the selection of choice for the contractor and under Massachusetts Public Procurement, we are required to give them three equals to that specified. They went with a different one and it did meet the specifications. Although the detailing of that window changed a little bit and there was some necessary and kind of required flange sealant that is being picked up by our waterproofer. So in order to make sure that those window units are completely sealed, these, these were needed. So that was 37, that's every single window in the building. I think 300 and, I want to say 360. So we, we did take quite a few, quite a few minutes to go through that one with the contractor. I think about a month. But that includes lift time, that includes man hours and includes material as well. They've, and they've been working through that scope. PCO 64 was a drain line for the bottle fill station in D building, not shown on the drawings. That was $1,898. PCO 56 was for the window sill pan steel gauge thickness. This was a material upcharge at the windows in order to make sure that it was the correct thickness. So the detailing worked out. That was a $2,000 change. Again, that was at each window that had that sill pan thickness. PCO 67 was the side court basketball equipment cradling. In order for these hoops to go up and to meet these equipment cradles and not run into them, there were some additional pieces needed for the basketball hoops. So that is for four of the basketball hoops, the two on, the two on either side of the main court. The, the pieces of the structural, the structural components of the side court hoops needed to be reconfigured. So this was a material increase just because of the way they needed to collapse. Instead of just swinging upright, they needed a, a system where one piece collapsed into the other and then they were fold up in a smaller fashion. And then the last PCO, PCO 71, this is the top of wall blocking. This is a detailing differential between structural and architectural. And it really only occurred around the E building. So the, the exterior sheeting that you see on the building was supposed to run all the way to the top of the roof. There was some areas where the sheeting was not proud, was too far proud of the steel at the top. It was more than a few inches. So there was some blocking required in order to have the sheeting to have something to run past it to carry up to the roof. So it had something to attach to at the top of the roof. The good news here is that the contractor was able to correct this as they were moving around the building when they were setting up. So there was only about $7,000, $7,002 worth of work. So that's all the PCOs and the total for change order five, I know, was $97,638.72. And I am happy to take any questions. I know that was a lot of information. Sorry. I'll break them up more when we, at the next meeting. We don't have so many.
Thanks Walter. Frank, any questions?
I just want to thank Walter for the comprehensive report. It's very helpful and I'm sure the, the general public appreciates it as well.
Absolutely. Not a problem.
Mark?
Can believe it Walter, I have no questions.
I talked a lot. I must have, I must have bored you. I'm sorry.
No, not at all.
I think Walter's getting used to what questions are going to be asked.
Yeah, he answers them so well that I, I can't come up with anything.
Jamie?
I wanted to grill him on the flange sealant at the windows, but he even covered it with the back and forth and clearly those guys scrutinized that very, very well. So thanks for, yeah, the attention to detail Walter.
Not a problem.
Just a small question from my own personal education. Like as far as projects goes, being at a 16.2% contingency at the 42-ish percent mark in the project completion, like is that pretty good or does that mean nothing or?
Uh, right now better than average.
Okay.
It would, if we had already done, taken down the other building, it would be well above average.
Okay.
So it looks like we're still on schedule?
Absolutely. Yep. We have a scheduled review in, that we just received from Break Builders for the month of January. So that's getting reviewed right now with their January requisition. It doesn't look like any time has slipped from substantial completion, but we're taking a look at that right now too.
That's terrific. Well, you know, there's a lot of things that can, can go awry on a project that size and things that you don't have any control of. And you've done an amazing job keeping things on task, keeping things on budget and really digging into some of these change orders. So I feel very comfortable that between you and the multiple checkpoints, you know, for each of these that we're doing good. So thank you very much for being here tonight.
Thank you.
All right. Have a good night.
Thank you Walter.
Thanks Walter.
Thanks Walter.
Want to do the, usually do we do the vote before I head out?
Do we want to do the vote? Do we want to do a vote? The vote? So, so the vote will be to accept the change order memo number five?
So moved, Barger.
Second Lamb.
Barger and Lamb?
Barger, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Stebbins, yes.
ACS.
And full Genetti, yes. Okay.
Sorry. Didn't want you guys to miss that. Thank you. Appreciate it. All right. Bye.
All right. Next, we have a discussion and vote for a contract award with Liberty Chevrolet for a 2022 Chevy Silverado in the amount of $117,461. And this is DPW 2022-18. We have a memo in the packet that this is for equipment for the highway division. Town meeting approved the capital request of $128,000 to replace DPW vehicle number eight. This contract is for the purchase of the new 2022 Chevrolet 3500 HD Silverado cabin chassis with related accessories. It's being purchased under the Greater Boston Police Council procurement contract and the total amount of $117,461 will be funded through the approved capital funds. Some questions?
So moved, Barger.
Second Lamb.
Barger Lamb, back to you.
Barger, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Stebbins, yes.
ACS.
And full Genetti, yes. Okay, next we have a discussion and vote with Bristol Norfolk Public Health Partners Intermunicipal Agreement. Connor?
Sure. Thank you. Thank you. Thanks, Dottie. So the board may recall that before the holiday, there was a very similar item on your agenda. Believe it might have been the night of town meeting for the board to authorize me to execute an intermunicipal agreement with some of our neighboring communities as part of new state grant funding for regional health initiatives around practices like regional epidemiologists and contact tracers. And at that time, the agreement was still being worked through various legal firms of those communities. And so the intent was at once all the attorneys had, had their edits to it that we would execute and move forward. But the agreement has expanded a bit and included some new members. And so we felt it was appropriate just to bring it back to the board because it's now a bit larger than it was. It still focuses on the same concept, which is an AMA with regional communities of a Bristol and Norfolk County area for regional health services, for services such as health inspections, epidemiological follow-ups, contact tracing and things of that nature. It would be funded through the state office of local and regional health as part of a public health excellence grant as well as through the Bureau of Infectious Disease and Lab Science. So we just wanted to bring this back forward because again, it's a slightly larger group of communities. And again, this is still being reviewed by a council in some of these communities. So provided there's no concerns, I would ask the board to take a similar vote to offer us me to execute it once it's finalized unless it has a substantial change again.
Any questions? All right. Would somebody like to make a motion to authorize the town administrator to execute the agreement on the intermunicipal agreement?
So moved, Barger.
Second Lamb.
Barger Lamb?
Barger, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Stebbins, yes.
ACS.
And full Genetti, yes. Next is a discussion and vote for the approval of the annual report of the Select Board. So as everyone knows, in usually at Springtown Meeting, there's a new book that shows the last year's reports from all the departments. It gives a lot of great information about the town. So the chair of each committee or board has to write the annual report. And so lucky me, that falls on me. It's, it doesn't look like a lot of work, but it's a lot of work because I go back through each month, starting in January, the year before. It's a January to December report. And it's like a trip down memory lane, you know, it's really hard to believe and go through that, all of the things that have happened in a year and then remembering back to a year ago where we were with, you know, some of the big things like, you know, COVID obviously. Looking back the year before, where were we? So it's kind of a little bit of a storybook narrative. Just a, a place and time, where were we? And then some of the major accomplishments and things that we worked on throughout the year. So I'm not going to read it. It is in the packet, but I'd, I'd ask everybody, not only is it available in the hard copy book. So if you have a library of them like I do, you can add to it, but it's also posted online. So on the town's website, you can just search for Town of Easton Annual Reports and you'll see them listed for each year. And it's kind of interesting to go back and look, you know, for each of the different departments, what's, what's gone on over the years. So did anybody have anything they wanted to add or comments or questions on it?
I thought it was very well written and it was sort of terrific to go back and see all the things we've accomplished over the last year, which is quite extraordinary.
Thanks Greg.
Agreed with everything Craig said. Very well done.
Mark gets to do the economic development annual report.
Well, I, I can't forget it. I think you reminded me maybe four times. I still have one more week to go.
Right. Jamie?
Thank you, Dottie, for pulling this together.
Thanks. Jen?
Thank you, Dottie. This, I know these are a lot of work and you did a beautiful job and the highlights are perfect. So awesome. Thank you.
Great. Well, it helps with Connor. He has a lot of detailed reports that he gives us. So I can pull a lot of information from that as well. So that's one of the things, we have so much information on everything all the time. Sometimes it can be, feel like too much information. The next thing we have is the, oh, so we have to take a vote. We don't, we haven't done this in the past, but I really wanted to do it this year to take a vote on accepting the annual report. This year to take a vote on accepting the annual report and I thought it was important to have it in the packet so that people would have a couple of opportunities to see it. So.
I moved to accept, I moved to accept the 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 well-written select board report.
So uh second lamb.
Both Roger and lamb?
Roger, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Debbens, yes.
ACS.
And full genetti, yes, great. Next, we have an acceptance of the gift from Stonehill College, um each year Stonehill, uh Stonehill. Gives the town a gift um of forty thousand dollars, they give us some rough guidelines on where they'd like us to spend some of the money, so. Um usually for twenty thousand of the forty, they want us to um give eight thousand to Eastern Public Schools. Five thousand to the Ames Free Library, four thousand to the Council on Aging and three thousand dollars to the Recreation Department. And so we we can vote to do that, um we usually keep the other twenty thousand and use it for certain miscellaneous things. We can use it for, we try to use it for things that we think fall in line with the mission of the college, so we've used it a lot for human rights. Uh economic development, uh small projects like that, so we appreciate um. You know, the support from the college, we have a really good relationship with them and partnership. They're really appreciative of the services they get from the town, from police, fire, um public health and the select board support, so. Um we uh we appreciate the gift and we have to vote to accept it.
I move that we accept the uh the. Forty thousand dollars from Stonehill College.
Second lamb.
Roger and lamb?
Roger, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Debbens, yes.
ACS.
And full genetti, yes. Next, the Swift Park Steering Committee appointments for a term expiring June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Um until Tony Bossa Junior is on the Commission on Disability and John Ventresco from the Historical Commission. So um we will um, do we need to vote specifically to accept those appointments? We probably should, just.
Yeah, I would think so.
The charge, uh yes, they've been nominated, those are members who have been nominated by those respective boards, so. They are to be appointed by the select board, so you could just vote to appoint the slate of rec uh nominees.
Okay. Greg, motion to.
I move to support the slate for the Swift Park Steering Committee.
Second lamb.
That's Roger and lamb?
Roger Slate.
Lamb Slate.
Devon Slate.
AC Slate.
And full genetti slate. Okay, next we have the Eastern Shovel Town Cultural District Management Partner Team Chair Appointment. Um so this appointment is, um if if you reviewed the um partnership agreement. Part of the charge states that the chairperson is appointed by the select board. So we had a meeting about uh a week ago to reestablish um that group and get it going. And I volunteered to serve as the chair and we would need to get that officially um approved by. This um select board if if you want to appoint me. Michael, did I miss something?
No, uh you did not, we we did, uh just wanted to point out, there's a correction for the agenda, the term expiration is actually June thirtieth. Twenty twenty-four, it's correct in the TA notes, but it was not correct uh in on the agenda itself. Um the chair position, as you noticed in the charges, for a five-year term. So just want to make sure when you make the motion, uh makes that, please make it June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
So I don't, so usually we reappoint the select board representatives every year, so that won't need to be done then?
Or will. In this particular one case, because the chair is a five-year term, um we don't believe that would be necessary, right?
Okay.
So I move to appoint Dottie Full Genetti as the Chair of the Shovel Town Cultural District Management Partners Team. With an expiration date of June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four.
Second lamb.
So that'll be a roll call vote, Craig?
Yeah, Roger, full genetti.
Lamb, full genetti.
Debbens, full genetti.
Stacy, full genetti.
Full genetti, full genetti. Alright, excellent, um item twelve, acceptance of a resignation of Valerie Frank from the Green Communities Team. Uh Valerie had sent us her resignation and um. Sad to see her not be able to serve on that board anymore, uh she she was a great contributor and um if we need to make. A vote to accept the resignation with regret, so Craig, if you'd like to make the motion?
I move to accept the unfortunate resignation of Valerie Frank from the Green Communities Committee.
Second lamb.
That's Roger and lamb?
Roger Frank.
Lamb Frank.
Debbens Frank.
Stacy Frank.
And full genetti Frank. Next is the Town Administrator COVID nineteen update.
Thank you Daddy, I don't have a uh PowerPoint prepared for tonight, uh but I just wanted to touch on a couple of uh data points that I'm sure folks here are following. Uh it's thankfully uh mostly good news at this point, after a couple of uh tough months. What we're seeing in Easton is mirroring what we're seeing regionally and nationally with a relatively precipitous drop in cases on a week-over-week basis. The level of weekly cases is still higher uh than what we had seen prior to the uh beginning of the Omicron surge. But as just one example, three weeks ago, we we set uh our record for most cases of COVID in one week. Here in Easton, four hundred and sixty-seven cases in one week. Uh for a frame of reference, the worst of the uh Delta surge in around Labor Day, we saw. Uh fifty a week, so uh we multiplied by nearly tenfold there, but uh that figure has dropped. As of last week, which is the most recent uh weekly data from the state, we're down to one eighty-eight, which we want to see that come down further. But that's a drop of sixty percent in three weeks. Uh hospitalization data on the state level has similarly dropped more than sixty percent in those same three weeks, it was more than thirty-three hundred residents hospitalized. Uh three and a half weeks ago in Massachusetts, that's down to fifteen hundred, uh and cases in Massachusetts have dropped even more precipitously than that as they have nationally, so. Uh the good news is that all of those indicators are trending in the right direction and if they continue at this pace, uh things are going to be in a lot better place in a few weeks. Uh and spring will be a much uh more relaxed environment. Uh concurrent with this surge in cases, uh I've been asked Assistant Town Administrator Michael Blanchard. Who uh was obviously just filling in for me on my leave, did a wonderful job uh with all aspects of managing the town's operations, but also working with health and fire. To continue to run some testing and vaccine operations, so uh quite uh aggressive push during December. And January for uh booster clinics, vaccine clinics, including for children, uh and hundreds, I think if not thousands of tests performed. Um so Mike, could you just give a a brief update on the work that we've done uh through January?
Absolutely, so as as Connor mentioned, uh we stood up sixteen tests in vaccine clinics uh during the months of December and January. Uh we have almost eight hundred doses of vaccine we've put out and more than nine hundred rapid tests. So to uh continue our efforts, we have a few things going on in the next couple of weeks, the first is this Friday, which is February eleventh. From three to six at Eastern Middle School, we have a booster clinic for Eastern residents aged twelve plus. Um this is important to note, a number of our boosted clinics have been using Moderna vaccine, which was not eligible for this age group. So we're really trying to target, this is going to be Pfizer, uh so we're really trying to target those students ages twelve to seventeen for this clinic. Uh but any Eastern resident uh is eligible, uh if they wish to receive the Pfizer booster is encouraged to register. Uh you can go to our website, which is easton dot ma dot US backslash COVID nineteen and there's a link there uh that you can register for. Again, this is Friday, the eleventh. Um next week, although we haven't pushed out the registration yet, on the sixteenth, Wednesday the sixteenth. Will be having a public testing clinic at Fothering Hall, uh we hope that will be helpful to people as they prepare to travel for uh February vacations, school vacation week. And then we're also, um is it more maybe where the test had, uh student state had provided uh tests to a number of communities. Um unfortunately, Eastern did not qualify and so we didn't receive any of those tests to hand out to the community home tests. Um Eastern, uh because of that, we actually made some efforts to purchase home test kits and we are doing some distribution of those. Um we've started with the Eastern Housing Authority, Eastern Mobile Home Park, uh doing some of our chapter one fifteen veterans benefit recipients. And also uh looking to provide some to the the schools who uh are aware of families that are in some sort of financial need. Uh and need uh help with testing at home, so we'll be doing that as well over the next couple of weeks.
Thank you, that's great, Michael. Any questions from the board? It's a lot of work and, you know, speaking of thinking back over the past year, next year we'll be looking back saying, you know, remember how hard it was to get those tests. Last winter and um the government, if people signed up for the for the tests, they, those should be, I think they've, people have started to receive those recently as well too. So um hopefully, we continue to go in a positive direction here.
Daddy, can I just um echo something that that Connor said, that I I want to acknowledge um the job that Michael did while Connor was on leave. Um uh I know that um usually there's some event that occurs to really challenge Michael and we had the the blizzard of. Two thousand and twenty-two and he did a heck of a job with the with the rest, with the town of the town employees and and then I really appreciate it. Um and um this time I didn't create any problems, Michael, so it's it it's nice to to see that that mother nature took over. Um but you did a heck of a job and thanks to the members of your staff as well.
Hey, thank you for saying that, uh I, very well said and I could not agree more.
Okay, well, that is uh, that is a good COVID update. So next we will do the acceptance of the minutes for January twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two, if people have a chance to read them.
So move, Roger.
Second lamb.
Roger and lamb?
Roger, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Debbens, yes.
ACS.
And full genetti, yes. And uh town administrator notes? Assistant Town Administrator notes? I caught you on that one, um. Craig, Mark, uh Jamie, Jen, any notes from the select board?
I have a quick note. Um so, you know, I I I'd love to see positive things happen in the community and I'd love to see business thrive in the community. Uh so, uh you know, we started this meeting talking about economic development with Southeastern Motors and thank you to the Galtiers for being present tonight. But uh so last week, uh on the news, there was, there's a segment called Five for Good. Uh where basically Erica Tarantall, Channel Five goes around and finds communities where people just do good things. And she highlighted a local firefighter and uh and business owner, so it ties into economic development and the and the veteran part of it, so. Uh she highlighted uh Chris Mills, who's on the fire department, but also makes these flags and in the month of November, he gave. A veteran a flag for free every other day, uh and it really impacted a lot of people who watched that. Uh I know a lot of people have reached out to him and uh how much it meant to to them that he was honoring veterans like uh. Uh you know, without looking for any recognition whatsoever, it's actually a veteran that he had given it to. Uh who was, who worked at another business in town uh that reached out and and Chris had no idea, so I just want to tip my cap to to him and. Uh to all the veterans and uh into his business, so. That's my only notes.
That's great, it was a really nice piece too, Mark, uh it showed off his studio and uh really showed showcased his work and his talent. He is incredibly talented. Great, Jamie or Jen?
Yeah, thanks for sharing, Mark.
Thank you, I have nothing myself this week.
So I guess uh the couple of things that I wanted to mention are, um of course, the blizzard and and uh the great job that you did, Michael. But the DPW, our publics, um you know, health, uh fire, DPW and police. Uh all working together on that, it was um, the roads were cleared and really, you know, great, great amount of time, the sidewalks. And uh it was very safe, I could notice the difference driving into Eastern from some of the surrounding community, so we really appreciate that. All that extra effort and we know that um this year has been tough because it's been hard to find snowplow drivers as well, so um thank you for that. And also, I was able to attend a ribbon cutting for a new performing arts center at Southeastern Regional Vocational School last week. Um really, really beautiful um new addition and I got lost on my way out of the building. And so I ended up behind this group of students and I asked one of the young women if she could point me in the direction of how to get out of the school. And so um I chatted with her along the way and she told me that she was gonna, she was going to um college to be an actress. And all of the great experiences that she had at Southeastern Regional, she was such a poised, smart. Charismatic young person and it just made me feel so happy that our students get to experience, you know, they've, they recently redid the school. Probably not as recently as I feel, but within the past several years, um it's it's just beautiful in there and great opportunities. I don't, I'm not sure that people realize with the vocational schools, all that they have, it used to be, you know, um construction-related or plumbing and heating. And now, um you know, the theater and the arts, uh sciences, technology, so. Um congratulations to Southeastern Regional and congratulations to the young um woman who helped me find my way out of the building. And uh just to comment on how how nice the students were and how how professional and and respectful they were. So with that, um I will take a motion to adjourn.
So move, Roger.
Second lamb.
Roger and lamb?
Roger, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Debbens, yes.
Stacy, yes.
And full genetti, yes, thanks everyone.
Have a good night, stay safe everybody.
Is our next meeting. Bye.
Bye.